Hey everybody, welcome back. I want to say thank you so much for joining us on our Tuesday night Bible study. Uh, we are in the book of Daniel, uh, we're in chapter eight tonight. Uh, so if you're joining us for the first time, or you've been with us for a long time, we want to invite you to our website, Whitestonechurchtx.com, whitestonechurchtx.com. Uh, you can go to the video dropdown, uh, in the toolbar there, go to videos, you can drop down, find Daniel, uh, and look at session number 10. We're in chapter eight, but session 10. You can, uh, click on, uh, the PDF notes there. You can download our notes for tonight. They look like this, uh, with the ram and the goat, uh, on the front page. Uh, we're going to talk about probably one of the most intriguing chapters in the Bible related to end time prophecy. Uh, so we're starting in Daniel where we are really getting into the prophetic elements of this book. And so, uh, I want to ju- want to say thank you for coming, uh, on, online with us, joining us for this Bible study tonight. Uh, we are diving in Daniel, chapter eight. Uh, so Father God, we ask for your blessing and your peace and your interpretation. Uh, Holy Spirit, that you would teach us your word tonight. And everybody said, amen. I want to say hello to my friend Melissa, uh, who I saw the other night at the Irwin, at the Irwin Center, haha, at the HEB Center, at the Toby Mack Concert. Want to say thank you for listening or watching. Uh, God bless you. It was great to run into you the other night. So, hey, Daniel, chapter eight. Uh, we're going to look at the progression of Daniel, his life in Babylon, and now the prophetic elements of Daniel, chapter eight. So just to kind of recap a little bit, Daniel, uh, is taken captive as a young Hebrew boy, taken captive by the Babylonian king Nebuchadnezzar. Uh, Israel's invaded, Israel and the best of the best, the wisest of the wisest, the choicest, uh, people are brought back to the king's palace. They are made eunuchs, uh, they're servants to the Lord. Daniel has served, uh, served in the courts under three different kings, uh, consecutively or, or progressively for over sixty years of his life. So the first parts of Daniel are some historical accounts of his life. But one of the biggest accounts that is a, a theme through the book of Daniel is his ability to interpret dreams, uh, to see visions, to grasp the unknown, to grasp spiritual truth from dreams and visions. So one of the things that this book is trying to really capitalize on or engrain us is say, listen, you can trust the visions that Daniel records in Daniel, chapter eight, in Daniel, chapter seven. You can trust them because of the evidence of the proof of trusting with Daniel in the lion's den, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, Daniel interpreting dreams, rescuing people. Uh, God's hand is on Daniel. So I want to say this about dreams and visions and the interpretation of dreams. Don't read the Bible, specifically the Old Testament, and say, oh, dreams and visions were for those people way back then. Dreams and visions are for today, 2021. They are for the end time church. Acts, chapter two, Joel, "In the last days I will pour out my spirit." Old men will dream dreams, young men will see visions. That's not, uh, just, you know, euthanisms or, or just a, um, a statement of, oh, old guys, they're going to dream of their good old days and young guys are so optimistic and their visions for life are grandiose, but they'll, they'll come to reality one day. That's, that's a perversion of God's word. When God says they'll dream dreams, he means dreams from the spirit of God, the birth by the spirit of God from the throne room of heaven. When he says visions, he means visions, God's going to show them things. There are many businessmen who have had visions of inventions to make in farming, uh, in road safety, uh, in, in designs of carburetors and engine parts, airplanes. Many Christian businessmen have been hugely success- successful in business because they went to bed one night and the Lord gave them a dream, gave them a vision of how to do something better or unique like no one else. Many men and women of God have been warned of danger, warned of things to avoid through dreams and visions. Many men of God have been given hope or assignments or people's names or information through the Holy Spirit in their dreams and visions. So I want to just say that if the Lord is giving you dreams, if he's giving you visions, run with it. Now, not every dream you have is from God, not every, every vision you have is from God. God will give you and interpret for you and open up your eyes and your hearts to the supernatural. So when we get to Daniel, chapter eight, most of our history, uh, in preaching on this chapter and/or teaching this in our seminaries or in our concordances or commentaries, most of the, the scholars have chalked the first eight to twelve verses, uh, the first twelve verses in Daniel, chapter eight, have chalked them up to just historical accounts. Now, we're going to read Daniel, chapter eight, and it's going to reference the Medo Persian Empire and the rise of Alexander the Great and the Grecian Empire. It's going to mimic these two empires through the, through the goat and the, and the, um, and the ram. We're going to see how these empires fit this vision. But I want you to expand that and say, okay, God is giving us somewhat of a historical account, yes. But he's giving us that because that historical account and those events are a shadow or a forerunner of the real events prophetically. Now, I'm going to start Daniel, chapter eight. I want us to go down towards the end, uh, on the interpretation of the dream. So flip in your notes to like page number five, and I want you to look at verse fifteen, or verse seventeen, Daniel, chapter eight, verse seventeen. So in your Bible, find verse seventeen, in your notes, find verse seventeen. And I want to read to you the interpretation of the dream before we read about the dream. I'm just going to read to you two sentences or two verses about the interpretation. So let me set this up a little bit. In Daniel, chapter eight, verses one through twelve, God gives Daniel a dream, gives him a vision, actually, a vision, and shows him these two empires that are likened to one a ram and one a goat. And these ram, this ram and this goat, they go to war and, and the, uh, and one conquers the other. And out of the one, there's two horns, and out of the other, there's one horn, and then comes four horns. And then out of one of the four horns comes a little horn, and that little horn grows up to be a, a, a mighty dictator and, uh, empire that rules the world. That's kind of the basis of the dream. So the dream itself is very confusing, so we can't quite figure it out. So we've chalked the dream up to historical information. Or this is an account of Alexander the Great with the Grecian Empire coming in and destroying the two-horned empire, the Medo Persian Empire, and Alexander the Great ruling the world. Uh, but then Alexander the Great dying at a young age, and his four generals take over his empire, and those guys, uh, rule the world as the, his great empire was divided by four. So we've chalked this thing up to a historical account. I want us to see it for its historical value and worth, but I want to challenge you to trust what we're fixing to read. Because twice the Gabriel angel, the angel, the angel Gabriel tells Daniel, "This is a dream for end times." This is not a dream for historical emphasis or historical information. This is a dream that could match historical information, but it is a dream of what will happen in end times. So let's read that first. Daniel, chapter eight, verse seventeen. Um, or let's just start in verse fifteen so that we can get the context of Gabriel approaching Daniel. "When I, Daniel, had seen the vision," now, we don't really know what the vision is yet because we haven't read that part. "When I, Daniel, have seen the vision, I sought to understand it." So Daniel has a vision, now he wants the understanding of it. "And behold, there stood before me one having the appearance of a man," verse sixteen. "And I heard a man's voice between the banks of the Ulyte, and it called Gabriel." And, and it called, "Gabriel, make this man understand the vision." Gabriel, the angel, "Make this man understand the vision," verse seventeen. "So he came near where I stood, and when he came, I was frightened and fell on my face." Most accounts of men or women seeing angels in the Bible, they make them afraid, they fall on their face. "But the angel said to me, 'Daniel, understand, O son of man, that the vision is for the end of time.'" So highlight, underline, in your Bible, verse seventeen, "This vision is for the end of time." Let's read verse eighteen. "And when he had spoken to me, I fell in a deep sleep with my face to the ground, but he touched me and made me stand up." So if you could just imagine Daniel standing here, Daniel just had this vision, he doesn't understand it. Now the angel Gabriel is standing before him and says, "Daniel, O son of man, I want you to understand, this dream is not for you right now. It's not a historical account, it's not a future account. It is for end times, for the return of Christ." So then Daniel passes out, verse eighteen, he passes out, he can't handle it, it's brain mental overload. So the angel wakes him back up, verse nineteen, and says, "Behold, Daniel, I'll make known to you what you shall be, what shall be at the end, at, at the latter end of indignation, for it refers to the appointed time of the end." So he tells him again. So in two verses, Gabriel, on a dispatched message, mission from God, tells Daniel, "This vision is not for right now, it's not just for a hundred and fifty years from now, it is for end times." So let's go back and read the vision, let's grasp the vision. And then we've got to say, okay, what's this, how's this going to happen in end times? So Daniel, chapter eight, is extremely prophetic. Now, let's think about some things before we read Daniel, chapter eight. Let's go to Jesus's day and age. You got Matthew, you have Peter, you have James, you have John, you have Andrew, you have Thomas, you have Judas, you have the twelve disciples. They had a Bible, and that Bible was called the Old Testament. They had scrolls, they had the book of Daniel written in their synagogues. They could go and unroll that scroll, they could read the book of Daniel, it was taught to them. They read the book of Genesis, the book of Leviticus, they memorized the Torah. These men that were with Jesus, they knew the Old Testament. Paul, who wrote sixteen books of the New Testament, he had a Bible also. He was a learned, uh, uh, official in the Sadducees and Pharisee- saical courts of, 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 uh, Israel. He had a Bible, it was called the Old Testament. So when James, uh, when John, when Paul, when they wrote the New Testament books, they wrote it with the base, the basis, the foundation of the Old Testament. When John wrote the book of Revelation, he wrote it knowing the book of Daniel. So we can't understand Revelation if we don't understand Daniel. My friend Mike Privel taught me that. If we don't grasp it, then we're going to miss something. But we can't say, well, the book of Revelation trumps the book of Daniel, they go hand in hand. So Daniel, chapter eight, I want us to emphatically make this statement. It is a prophetic chapter on what end time nations, kings, empires, and systems will do. And it is a, it is a map or a blueprint of how the Antichrist will rise to power. Now, before we talk too much about it, I also want to bring this point to light. That Abraham, the founding father, the father of many nations, Abraham who founded the nation of Israel, God pulls him out of Caldea, pulls him out of his hometown, out of his home country, away from his family, and makes a covenant with Abraham, called the Abrahamic covenant. And he tells Abraham, "You will be the father of many nations," promising him through his son Isaac. Abraham takes things into his own hands. He has a child before Isaac named Ishmael, not with Sarah, but with his, with her maid servant, Hagar. Ishmael and Isaac are the two sons that were at war, if you will, because Abraham kicks Ishmael out at around the age of thirteen. So Ishmael is abandoned and rejected, but God says, "I'll bless you and I'll keep my hand on you." So all the way back to Abraham, we see two paths, if you will. One is Isaac, and that has to be the firstborn son of Abraham and Sarah, and that is the lineage to Jesus Christ. Ishmael is, is not the lineage of Jesus Christ. Ishmael is the other son of Abraham. Now, out of Ishmael, his descendants, we get the religion of Islam. We get the, the religion, uh, in the Bible, there are many nations that are birthed from Ishmael's birth line. And out of them come many different pagan deities, different, different, uh, societies. So when we just look at a real brief overview, all the way back to Abraham, we see two strands or two strains coming out of that lineage. One is today, the birth or the, or the founding of Ishmael would go back to Islam. Isaac goes back to Judaism, back to God's, uh, line of Jesus for, for salvation of the world. Now, knowing that, we need to take that perspective and say, okay, how does that play when it comes to the return of Christ? How does that play out when it comes to the Jews in the Middle East today and the Islamic nations that are around them today? How did that come to be? How is that prophetic? It's not just historical, but it has prophetic connotations. So let's keep those two things in mind, dive into Daniel, chapter eight, verse one. "In the year of the reign of King Belshazzar, a vision appeared to me, Daniel, uh, after that which appeared to me at the first, and I saw in the vision, and when I saw, I was in Susa, the citadel, which is in the province of Alm, and I saw in the vision, and I was in, I was at the Ulyte Canal." Now, his vision that he had, he was probably physically in Babylon, but his vision took him to Susa. Now, Babylon was fifty miles, in your notes, Babylon is fifty miles south of modern day Baghdad in Iraq today. So back in the Gulf War in the early nineties, Saddam Hussein, prior to the Gulf War, uh, and, and, uh, and that battle, Desert Storm, prior to that, he was already rebuilding Babylon. Babylon is fifty miles south of Baghdad, the city that gained notoriety, at least here in America, during that war, put him on the map, put Iran and Iraq into the American understanding, into our mindset. This, uh, Babylon was just fifty miles, um, south of that. So Daniel's down in Babylon, but he's having a vision about this, what we would call Baghdad or this place. Susa, or I'm sorry, Susa, the citadel, is two hundred miles east of Babylon, which is today, modern day Iran. Iran, uh, and Elam is the province of Persia. So when you read these cities, to put it on the map today, you were, where you have Iraq, Iran, and what we would call Persia, the Bible would call Alm. Uh, ancient Persia is now modern day Iran. So, so we can see that these two cities had great emphasis, there's a reason they're listed in the Bible. It's not just there so we could have the historical information. It's there to give us understanding of what had happened and what will happen. Uh, Susa today is still a city in Iran called Shush. And if you Google that, it'll, it'll pop up. So where Daniel is, is very well located today on our map, he's in Iran. They called it something different. Verse three. "I raised my eyes and saw, and behold, a ram standing on the bank of the canal. It had two horns. Both horns were high, but one was higher than the other, and the other one came up last." Now, this fits the Medo Persian Empire, two different empires that come together. They, they destroy Babylon, they, they, they destroy the head of gold, they are the chest of, of silver. This Medo Persian Empire is then taken over by or destroyed by Alexander the Great. But during this time, we have two empires that come together, and so we have two horns, but one's greater than the other. So we see Cyrus is the ruler over all the, you know, the other side. So we see the merging of two kingdoms. So this animal, this ram, has two horns representing the historical account. But I want to read it this way, it's not just a history lesson, it's referencing a prophetic event of the bir- emerging of two nations before the return of Christ, or the setup or the establishment of the Antichrist. So really, I want to say this, this represents two nations that will come to set up the stage for the Antichrist to rule. So here we go. Uh, the book of Daniel's under great, uh, higher criticism attack because these prophecies are so relevant. So if you ever read somewhere on the History Channel, the internet, uh, you see some sort of special, uh, presentation that the book of Daniel was written by somebody other than Daniel, the book of Daniel was written after the fact, and, and so that's why those are all hogwash to destroy the validity of the word of God. Jesus Christ quoted the book of Daniel numerous times. So let me, let me just say it like this. This is why I trust the Old Testament. I trust the Old Testament because Jesus never would have quoted a written word from the Old Testament. Jesus quoted Genesis, he quoted Psalms, he quoted numerous books of the Bible in the Old Testament. So Jesus never would have quoted and validated an Old Testament book if it was in error, if it was written by somebody else, if it wasn't truly the word of God. Because Jesus can't lie, and so therefore he would not have repeated a lie and taught it as truth. The book of Daniel can be trusted. The book of Daniel is the manual for the end time church. Uh, the book in chapters eight and chapter seven, those can, they reiterate each other, and they are setting the foundation for the book of Revelation. Um, it's a uniformed message that Daniel was a man of wisdom and understanding. Uh, I already mentioned Acts, chapter two. I want to, um, mention a couple of other things before we read verse four. The animals in scripture represent empires. So Jesus is the lion or the king or the, of the kingdom of Judah. Jesus is, is not a lion, but he's likened to the lion of the tribe of Judah. He's the king of the tribe of Judah. His kingdom will come from the tribe of Judah. Uh, the ram in this verse represents an empire, just as the beast in chapter seven represents the Antichrist empire. The beast that the world will mourn in Revelation represents not the Antichrist himself, but his power, his kingdom, his, his empire. Um, the horns that come up represent kings. So when we see the, the ram, uh, coming out, and he's got two horns, the ram represents Babylon, the empire. The horns represent the two kings or the different kings that rule that empire. So there's some, some symbolism here, but when it references an animal, you take the characteristics of that animal, they represent the empire, the horns represent the king, um, or the one leading that empire. Um, in this, in this case, these two horns represent the Medo Persian Empire, but it also is a representative of the false prophet and the beast system in Revelation. So in Revelation, we'll see the Antichrist, and we'll also see the false prophet. Those are two different people. Uh, we'll also see the beast system. So the false prophet and the beast system could very well be this ram with two horns that, that one is greater than the other, the system may be better than the false prophet, or the false prophet may be better than the system, but, but we've got to look forward, we can't just look at, at, as this is, is historical. Verse four, um, this is where we get a geographical lesson also. So the reason we need to know that this is taking place in modern day Iran and Iraq is to give us an understanding of how will the enemy, how will this army invade Jerusalem? Verse four. "I saw the ram charging westward, northward, and southward." Now, why would Daniel, in his vision, tell us that the ram is charging towards the north, towards the, uh, the west, and towards the south? He doesn't mention the east, so he must already have that conquered. Now let that sink in. This, this ram, or this goat, that, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, this ram that's charging, he's, he, he, he's not looking back, he's already got that, he's taking over the world. He's taking over areas and territories that he doesn't own yet, or doesn't, hasn't conquered yet. Um, the question that I have here is why isn't, why is direction important here? Uh, is the east already conquered? What kingdom and from what direction will the Antichrist mount his attack against Israel? If you look on a map, Israel is sandwiched between, uh, Islamic nations that do want to destroy them, that want to annihilate them, that want to eradicate them from the planet earth. They hate them. This goes back to the foundation of Isaac and Ishmael, all the way back to claiming who is the right religion, claiming who is the firstborn of Abraham, trying to claim, trying to jockey for position, kicking Jesus, kicking the bloodline out, trying to rule and reign. Um, there's a lot of notes, so I'm, I'm on this page right here. If, if I'm, if I'm losing you, I'm, I'm right before, uh, right after verse four. Uh, so verse four, uh, he's, it tells us, he's going these different directions. Um, and I'll reference some of these notes, maybe not all of them, but, uh, "From southern modern day Iran, the ram empire will attack the north, west, and south." So when it says the north, west, and south, the east is already got, is already, uh, conquered. And this thing is coming out of what is today Iran. Uh, "The new ram empire, the king or champion, will beat everybody in his way." But then we're going to see in scripture this new goat empire. So let's read, uh, the finish, let's finish the verse down there. It says, "No beast, no beast could withstand the ram or his empire, and there was no one that could rescue from his power. He did as he pleased, and he became great." Now, this is an indication of worldwide domination. Now, this is the Medo Persian Empire. This is the empire that, uh, is represented by the ram and the, and the goat. Um, I wrote it in my notes, I don't remember exactly where, but I just want to say this. This empire in our mind, we look back and we see how, uh, um, King Cyrus ruled these two nations and dominated the world. So we see chariots, swords, spears, arrows, guns, knives, bombs, we see a physical takeover. But could the precursor to the empire of the Antichrist not necessarily just be a physical domination? But could it be a reference to an influence that dominates the world? Now just break down the word Medo Persian. So has, we look back and God's saying, there's this ram that comes from the Media, Medo, Persia empire. But if you look at it, um, and I wrote it on here somewhere, I'll find it in a minute. But could it be that one of the ways the, the, this new beast system will be established will be through the king of not Medo, but through the king of Media? So can we see that there is a ram with two horns that is dominating the north, the west, and the south with a media propagation or a media message, a message that comes through the media, a message that comes through social media, a message that comes through the airways, a message that comes in the form of false religion propaganda? Can that be one of the horns that comes up out of this ram? This ram represents an empire, it represents a nation, it represents a government, it represents a, um, a, a, a democracy or a, or a, uh, um, non-democracy, the words escaping my mind. It, it, it represents the mindset of Satan himself for the intent of worldwide domination. So when we bow down and we give the enemy an inch, he doesn't just come in and say, "I'm happy with an inch or two." He comes in, "I'll be happy when I destroy you." Jesus taught us that in John ten ten. In John ten ten, the enemy comes to kill, steal, destroy, not cohabitate. Not in-integrate, not coexist. The enemy doesn't coexist, the enemy dominates. So just want us to say, I just want us to think, what if the empire that's being set up? Is the empire of media influence? Not just a nation that comes up out of the Middle East and attacks America or attacks Canada. Or attacks Germany or attacks physically Ethiopia. Now that can be the case and it will be the case. But this isn't just nuclear war or World War Three. The war has already started. What if this? Nation or this empire that's ruled by a king? Well, that king may not wear a, have a, 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 a. A um, what do you, a scepter in his hand and a, and a, a, a purple. A diadem eh, hat on and sitting in the, what if he's a businessman that sits in a high-rise uh building? That influences all the television stations in one nation. What if it's another businessman in another building in another country? That is succumbed to that businessman and he rules all the newspapers and all the media sources in this country. And then therefore he starts to dominate the media outlets in every nation that he could get his hands on. So therefore he is dominating those people groups. Not through guns and weapons and wars, but through the king of media Persia. Medo Persia. This empire existed, it's coming back. It's not gonna be the same name. It's not gonna come back the same way. Satan doesn't, he, he's doing the same old tricks, but he just puts him on a new disguise. So please hear that. No beast could stand before him. There was no one that could rescue him from his power. He did as he pleased and became great. Now think about what's happening just in America. Our social media outlets are doing what they please. They're censoring who they want. They are determining what's truth, what's real, what's fake. They're playing all the shots. Can that be an indication or are we blind to it? Verse five. As I was considering this, so Daniel's going. Man, this vision, I can't even figure out who this ram is. As I've been considering this, now this gets deep. This is, this, this chapter is deeper than I ever knew. I've never even considered reading Daniel chapter eight. Uh, I'm new to this chapter. I'm center tummy. My mind is being blown. Verse five, as I was considering, behold, a male goat came from the west. Across the face of the whole earth without touching the ground. So on, on, on the first page of your notes, this is just an artistic drawing I pulled off the internet. You got, you got the ram that's ruling the world. He's got two horns, one's greater than the other. This could be two nations, two business partners, two conglomerates. This can be, this can be two uh, um, document agreements of several partners. We don't really know what this means, but these kings means rulership. So, so Tom Brady is like the king of quarterbacks right now. He's ruling that world, you know, like him or not. There, the, these two kings are, are, they've established their kingdom. They're in control. But Satan is just using them as puppets. So, so here comes the, the goat. And he's got one horn. Now, now, now read, read your Bible, verse five. And I, as I, Daniel, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on with this ram. Behold, a male goat from across the west. He, he's giving us direction again. Cr- across the face of the whole earth. So, so he, he is charging from, I mean, he's got mass momentum. This isn't, this could be a war over oil. This could be a war, this could be another nation that doesn't like what this ram's doing. How the ram is controlling the information, how the ram's controlling the oil supply, how the ram's controlling the business. How the ram's uh dominating different, the, this can be a, a, a setup like. The allied forces going up against Hitler back in the day. He's starting to gain momentum and so now the, listen. This goat comes across the, the whole earth. He, this is not a regional battle. This isn't just a, a tornado that takes place in Kansas, man. This tornado is impacting the, that's what the thing about Corona. This isn't just a. A little uh, uh, um, disease that's impacting one nation in Ethiopia and the poor people in Africa. This is global. Well, this, this goat is global. So he comes without touching the ground. Now Satan is called the prince of the power of the air. So when we think about Satan himself, one of the titles God gave him. To, so that we could describe and understand his, his territorial reign. Satan's not uh, the power of the, he's not the prince of the power of the ground. Say, Adam was the, was, was given the ground. At, Adam, this is your earth. Now, Adam wasn't given the sky. He wasn't told, go rule with the birds. No, he was given the ground, but Satan Lucifer, the fallen angel, is the prince of the power of the air. This goat doesn't touch the ground. Now, could this be missiles? Could this be uh, nuclear warheads shot from one nation to the other? Can this be, somebody pulls the nuclear bomb and they travel across from, from this side of the globe? And they destroy these two nations on this side of, very well could be. Could this be a vision of rockets? Could this be a vision of some sort? Or could this be a vision of Satan in the air? Again, ruling the media, ruling what we hear, destroying them. Because maybe these two guys, maybe these two nations, maybe these two horns coming from the ram, maybe everybody hates them. Satan will be a false savior. He will be a false peacemaker. The Antichrist will be somebody that, that rises up and it's got, he's kissing babies and hugging mamas and. Loving everybody, feeding the homeless, helping the orphans, but behind the scenes, he's killing babies. Uh, slaughtering parents. He, he hates every, I mean, he is behind the scenes, he's horrible, but in front, he's gonna bring peace. Well, thi- this is, this is, so this goat comes flying in and he looks like a unicorn, cause he's got one horn. And the goat had a conspicuous horn between his eyes. So, I mean, there, there's something between his eyes. There's something he's fixated on. So if something's between your eyes, it, 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 it messes you up, cause you can't see anything but this thing between your eyes the whole time. There's something, he is on a mission to destroy the ram empire. Now listen, Satan will give you power. He'll, he'll give you the songs and let you sell your soul to, to, to rock and roll, sex, drugs and rock and roll, but. He'll require something of you at the end. He'll get his, he'll use you. He'll, oh Judas, I love you Judas, Jesus is horrible. Hey, let me give you some silver. You need to betray him and I'll make you the leader of the pack. Listen, he'll Judas you all the way till you do the deed. And as soon as you do the deed, he'll drop you like a bad habit and he'll shame you and guilt you. This is what's happening. So this goat comes across the world and destroys the ram. He came to the ram, verse six, chapter eight, verse six. He came to the ram with two horns. This is not just imagery, this is reality. The, again, this could be two nations that team up. This could be Iran saying to Iraq, hey. Let's let all the bygones be bygones, the Shiites and the, and the, and the Sunni. We're gonna all be. Blood brothers now. We're gonna love each other. We're gonna make a mass power and we're gonna start dominating. Nobody can stop them. So then you gotta have somebody from the west come say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna mount our forces. We can't let them take over. We're gonna take over. Okay? He came to the ram with two horns, which I had seen standing on the bank of the canal. So it's interesting, he saw it, but he didn't recognize its power. So sometimes you can see the enemy, but you don't really realize it's a threat until it moves, till it starts to move. Um, so he came to the ram with two horns, which I had seen standing on the bank of the canal and he ran at him in his powerful wrath. Seven, I saw him come close to the ram and as he, and he was enraged against him. And struck the ram and broke his horns. Broke his two horns. So this goat empire, this goat system, now this is what Alexander the Great did. Uh, and I'm not a history buff, I don't, Alexander the Great came in like a hurricane force and destroyed the Medes and the Persians. He destroyed them, broke them, demolished them, conquered them, no mercy. He destroys the earth. I mean, he, he takes over the planet. So, so we can see this historically, but this is happening again. This is gonna happen again. So this empire breaks the back. Maybe they, maybe they take back the oil. Maybe they uh, take back the newspapers, the televisions, the news channels, the social sites. Maybe they come in and destroy their uh, religious stronghold on that sector of society. Maybe they come in and break the dictatorship, the king, Kim Jong-un or the uh, 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 um Chavez. Uh, Hugo Chavez back when he was in charge of Venezuela, maybe, maybe like uh, Fidel Castro, they come in and free the people and. And so the people are like, oh, thank you for freeing us from the tyrant or the tyrants or the two tyrant, whatever. But, but there's ill will in mind. So I saw him come close to the ram, verse seven. He was enraged, struck the ram, broke his horns and the ram had no power to stand before him. But he cast him down to the ground and trampled on him. So, so he, he's destroying them. And there was no one that could rescue the ram from his power. Verse eight. Then the goat became exceedingly great. But when he was strong, the great horn was broken. Now that's what happened to Alexander the Great. Alexander comes in at the height of his career, he dies. He's syphilis or whatever, he's dead. So the horn, the great horn, and the horn represents the king, the horn represents the leader. The empire is the animal. So Alexander the Great set up his empire. But when he died at a very unexpected event, very young age, now his four generals take over. So one king, one leader, leading a group is gonna destroy these two horn leaders. And everybody will cheer him, but at the height of his career or at the height of his victory. He's gonna fall. He'll be broken. He'll die. He'll be assassinated. Uh, he'll, you know, something. Then, the, then, uh, verse eight. The horn was broken and instead of it, there came up four conspicuous horns towards the four winds of. Of heaven. So out of this one horn comes four horns. This is a picture of what happened to Alexander the Great. Alexander's dead. His four leaders take over. They start to rule the nation until Rome comes in and destroys them. So this is going to happen again. This isn't, it's not gonna be Alex, a guy named Alex. It's not gonna be the Grecian empire. It's going to be a different group. But the same thing's gonna repeat. God's already given us the picture. If we'll study this Old Testament picture, we'll see the new picture developing like a puzzle. When you do the border. And you start to, you know, you start to fill in the pieces. You're like, oh, you're connecting the dots. So, um, so, so here we go. Let's keep going. Um, verse nine. Now verse nine, out of one of them. So out of one of what? The four little horns. So you got one big horn like a unicorn on this goat. This goat with his wrath destroys the ram, but in the height of his success, he's broken, he dies, he, his. He, or, or he's assassinated, his, his, his cronies, under rulers take over. Out of those four governments, out of those four kings, four presidents, prime ministers, you call them what you will, dictators. Four countries, four divisions, four, four uh, nations. Out of one of them will come a little horn. Now, we talked about this a little bit last week. I love it. God puts Satan in his place. The Antichrist in scripture is called the little horn. So he, he gives him no credit. He's just a punk. He, he, he's a nobody. He's a little horn. Now, this little horn will be seen but not recognized for his, his, his leadership or his power. Um, nobody recognized Hitler. When Hitler, before Hitler arose to power. He was preaching his propaganda in bars, pubs, in, in social uh, places. He, he would stand up in a bar and, and preach his white supremacy and his hatred for the Jews. Now, nobody, people listen to him, but he's this little guy. Nobody expected him to win. The election. Nobody expected him to get to the prominent, uh, the position of power. But, but that's what's gonna happen with the Antichrist. So the little horn is the Antichrist. He'll, he'll be the guy. Uh, in the Democratic uh, uh, or the Republican, um, you know, uh, running, you know, as there, as. As we're running for president and you got like twelve Democrats or twelve Republicans. And you got your two frontrunners that are gonna be the, the party's chosen, but he's the guy over there. Nobody thinks he'll win. That this guy's gonna come up. So verse nine, out of one of the four came a little horn. Which grew exceedingly great toward the south, indicating empire reign. Like he, he starts to grow in this area. Uh, if you were in business, it's like, he started to take over the tech market. He started to take over the pharmaceutical market. He started to take over uh, the gold and silver market, the precious metal market. He started to take, he started to grow in the south towards these certain directions. Um, toward the east and here it is, verse nine, underline it, toward the glorious land. Now here's where the Jews or Israel make a mistake. They start to do business with the Antichrist. They start to, to buy his goods. They start to buy his oil, buy his food supply. Buy his uh, uh, his, his information, his intel. They start to buy his governmental propaganda. They start to buy his false treaty of peace. He starts to grow his empire, but his eyes are set on the glorious land. This is Israel. This is Jerusalem. This is God's place. This is, this is the garden of Eden. This is the promised land. Joshua, the book of, the promised land. That's where it is. Verse ten, it grew great. Um, it grew great even to the host of heaven. Now, the little horn grew great to what? Towards the host of heaven. What's the host of heaven? The host of heaven are the angels. Angels are the word host. When it says host, it means angels. Uh, when it says host, it's the host of heaven. We'll, we'll learn in the, in the next verse, he'll talk about the host in Israel or the host on earth. Those are not angels. He even goes, grows great in the eyes of the angels. So this Antichrist little horn won't just be great in the eyes of man and fool the Jews. He's gonna fool angels. He's going to be great in the host of heaven, verse ten. And some of the hosts and some of the stars it threw down to the ground and trampled on them. Go to Revelation, chapter twelve in your Bible, Revelation, chapter twelve. This is an indication of what happens in Revelation, verse one, chapter twelve, verse one. Now a great sign appeared in the heaven. A woman clothed with the sun and the moon under her feet and on her head, a garland of twelve stars. And being with child, she cried in labor and pain to give birth. Another sign appeared in heaven, behold, a great fiery red dragon, Satan. Having seven heads and ten horns. Seven heads, nations, seven governments. Ten horns, ten leaders. Uh, and seven diadems on his tail. His tail drew a third of the stars of heaven and threw them to the earth. The dragon stood before the woman who was ready to give birth to devour her child as soon as it was born. This is a reference to Satan in a war, uh, and I didn't even read it, but, but then there's a war between. Michael, the archangel against Satan and his forces. This is not just, oh, God won the battle. God's already won. I know the end of the book. I, I'm, I'm, oh, I've read the end of the book. I know what happens to me. We don't know what's happening. That's why we make statements. There is going to be a real. Spiritual battle, a clashing of forces. And it will have physical connotations. When Satan's thrown to the earth, it's chaos and confusion. God separates chaos and confusion. He brings forth creation. There's a real battle that's gonna take place. It's already taken place. Um, here we go, verse eleven. Oh, the Tower of Babel. When you read the Tower of Babel and you say they, they built it to heaven. It wasn't that they were gonna build a, a eight thousand mile statue into the sky to break into the upper stratosphere. It's that they're, they're, they're operating through demonic, uh, occultic demonology and theology. They're building, Nimrod built a system, built an empire. To rule the world for Satan. That's what the Antichrist is doing. Verse eleven, it came great, even as great as the prince of the hosts. And the regular burnt offering was taken. And the regular burnt offering was taken away from him and the place of his sanctuary was overthrown. And a host will be given, this is talking about Israel, over to it and together the regular burnt offering. Because of rebellion or transgression, and it will throw to the, truth to the ground and it will act and prosper. In other words, Satan taking over the temple in Jerusalem and destroying it. Making the sacrifices to him, not God. Listen, Satan's not gonna sit in the Jewish temple and say, I am Yahweh, I am Jehovah God. No, 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 he will mock God, mock Jesus. First John two twenty-two, who is the liar? It is whoever denies that Jesus Christ is such a person as the Antichrist denying the father and the son. The Antichrist will deny Jesus, he'll deny the spirit of God and he'll deny the father. Listen, there are already religions doing that. There are already religions, Islam, saying that Jehovah is not God. Jesus isn't his son and the spirit is not the spirit. Other religions say, well, God's real name is this or that, his name is Allah, or his name is Buddha. Or he is not really a god, he's just a higher power, he's an, he's Nirvana, he's utopia, he's a great mindset. Oh, he's the tree in the backyard, let's worship the stupid tree, let's, you know, hug and find our energy. No, we're worshiping the created, we're calling God something that's not his name, we're, we have an Antichrist spirit. We're denying Jesus, oh, Jesus wasn't the son of God, and when we say son of God, that means God in the flesh, not just something God birthed. We mean God in the flesh, he's not the son of God, he's just a prophet, he's just a good teacher. So that's the Antichrist spirit, so the Antichrist will come in and he will not want to be God, he will want to mock God. So we have to see that this is already emerging. We have to see that Satan himself is doing what he can do to implu- in- infiltrate. The, through the prince of the air, the power of the air and build his kingdom. Here's the scary question, here's the scary question. Remember when Jesus is, is on the earth? He starts his ministry, he's in, he's in, uh, thirty A.D. Jerusalem. He meets a guy named Peter, Peter's just a fisherman, he, the, if you haven't seen The Chosen, the, the TV series, go watch The Chosen. It's an amazing de- depiction of, of Peter and the disciples, but Peter, he's a punk. He's a hothead, cocky fisherman, he, he's already been rejected from the, 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 the religious leaders, he's just living life. Jesus pulls him in. And Jesus for three and a half years says, I'm building my kingdom, I'm building my kingdom, I'm building my kingdom, I'm building my kingdom. And Peter, up until the night of Jesus's crucifixion, is like, I'm gonna cut your head off, Roman soldier, cause I'm here to build a kingdom with Jesus. So he's slicing the ears off. Cause he wants to, he didn't get that Jesus's kingdom was a spiritual kingdom. Well, we're being lulled to sleep, saying, well, the Antichrist, he, he's not ruling like the European nations right now. Uh, I mean, he's, he's not been elected to rule the UN right now, um, uh, the, well, the Antichrist might have been, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're like, well, where's his headquarters? His headquarters is in the hearts and the minds of all the people that he's building his perverse kingdom in. So listen, he's building this kingdom in our hearts and minds first, then when he builds it brick and mortar, we're gonna be like, yeah, we're gonna worship that guy. We love the beast. Oh preacher, I'll never take the mark of the beast. You're gonna take the mark of the beast if you're not denying it right now. It's not something you'll take one day, it's something being sold to you right now. The physical mark will be the easy part, is selling it to your heart and mind today, he's methodically doing that day after day after day after day. All of our lives to get us to trust silver, gold, brick, mortar, things that we can touch, taste and feel. We're worshiping our 401K, why won't we worship the beast? We're worshiping sex, why won't we worship the beast? We're worshiping governmental saviors, why won't we worship the beast? The empire that Satan is building, he's already building it. So when it tells us that like a goat, he'll come across the air, not touching the ground. That could mean a nuclear missile, yes it could, very well. And, and it, and it will, it will be some sort of real war, I'm not saying none of this will be physical. But I'm saying he's already attacking through the air, our hearts right now, like a, like a one. He, he's doing it, so, so I hope you're with me. Um, how much time do we got, I'm, lost my phone, here we go. Do we have any questions? If you got any questions, uh, I'll take some, so, okay, we got a question, let's take a break, what, what's our question?
So, I don't know if you wanna go into it tonight, but it's from Mollie and it's, uh, it's, she wanting you to go more in depth of Revelation twelve, verses four and five about the male child, whether he's good or evil, so I don't know if you wanna do that this time or next time.
Let's, let's pick up on Revelation twelve, uh, the, the next week, uh, four and five. Uh, you know, this, this child, um, that she bore a child, uh, who was to rule the nation as a rod of iron, her child was caught up to God. And is thrown, that child is Jesus Christ. Um, the questions that, that sometimes we, we go back and forth is, is who's birthing it, is this Israel, is this the church? So let me, let me kinda dig into that maybe next time, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that and I'll, and I'll read that, um, I'll, um, let me, let me tackle that next time, so. Okay, verse twelve, and uh, we're going to read twelve and thirteen, um, so, but thank you, Mollie, for the question. Please keep them coming, I just don't have a great answer for that, uh, right now. Um, verse twelve. And a host will be given over to it together with the regular burnt offering because of transgression slash rebellion. And it will throw truth to the ground and it will act and it will prosper. Unfortunately, to the demise of believers, the Antichrist will destroy truth, but he'll prosper in it. So listen, that doesn't just mean that he's gonna have money, Satan could care less about money. Satan doesn't want gold, Satan's got gold, he doesn't want so, he wants souls. He wants conquered souls to worship him. Verse thirteen, then I heard a holy one speaking and another holy one speaking, saying to, uh, and said, wa- said to the one who spoke. For how long is the vision concerning the regular burnt offering, the transgression that makes desolate? And the giving over of the sanctuary and the host to be trampled underfoot? In other words, how long will Jerusalem be ruled by Gentiles? How long will Jerusalem and the host, the leaders? How long will the leaders be succumb to the, to the ritual and, or the, the, the abuse and the torture? And the ridicule of the Antichrist? How long will, uh, they, will the sanctuary be in the hands of those who trample it underfoot? And he said to me, for twenty-three hundred evenings and mornings, then the sanctuary will be restored to its rightful state. This is a return of Christ, this is, this is prophetic tribulation timeframe. Now, a- and I don't have a lot to say about verse thirteen and fourteen. But now you see, when we get to the vision interpretation where we started, verse seventeen. Gabriel says to Daniel, hey Daniel, I'm gonna tell you the understanding of this vision. But the time, you can understand it, but the time will be for the end. So when we read this, we can't say, oh, well, the first twelve verses were an account of the Medo Persian empire and the takeover of Alexander the Great. Why would God waste twelve verses of precious scripture to just give us a history lesson? It's because it's not just a history lesson, it is saying this thing's happening again in the end times. Daniel faints, he can't handle the information, the downloads too much, Gabriel wakes him up and he says, again, verse nineteen. For it reach, it refers to the appointed time of the end. I put in a bullet point there, this has not happened yet, this is prophetic, not historical. End of time is the tribulation and the return, this has not already happened. Please read the first part of Daniel, chapter eight. Please look at it and say, okay, God, reveal to me what you're trying to say to me. I wanna sum up this and we'll, we'll pick up next week. The ram nation, the ram represents a nation, a people, a system, an empire, uh, a conglomerate. It'll be ruled by two that are both in unison, but one will be greater than the other. Another empire over here won't like the power grab, they won't like the takeover. They will destroy in whatever means that means. Hostile business takeover, a political regime change, a, uh, uh, that's kinda funny. Uh, a hostile re- re- uh, political regime change. Um, it's not funny, um, a, uh, a, a nuclear or a, a physical war. Or a, uh, i- 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 this goat nation empire ruled by somebody will destroy those guys. But then that guy will be destroyed. And then Satan starts to bring forth what he's been birthing since the garden of Eden. He will birth four leaders and out of one of those leaders, out of his political cabinet, out of his, uh, one of his business associates, somebody that we won't suspect will rise up. And that will be the Antichrist, that will be the little horn spoken of Daniel in Revelation. So we're gonna pick up there next time, we'll pick up, uh, you know, at the, at the beginning of the interpretation, read ahead. Uh, understand what, uh, what Gabriel tells Daniel, he gives him the interpretation, that's, that's so cool. What we have to do is we have to figure out, how does this interpretation match today? What, what's gonna happen today? Um, I want us to pray for our brothers and sisters in Syria and Nigeria. Uh, today, uh, radical Islam, uh, is killing thousands of Christians. Uh, today, in twenty twenty-one, January, February, twenty twenty-one. Thousands of men and women have been slaughtered, beaten, abandoned, abused, tortured, homes destroyed, churches burnt down. Because of their belief in Jesus Christ. It may not be happening in your neighborhood and my neighborhood. And so therefore we may say, well, tribulation doesn't really happen for the saints. Tribulation is not just a time period of seven years, that's actually in scripture called the great tribulation. But Jesus says tribulations will come. But he who endures to the end. So I wanna say this, that let's get out of the mindset that we got this free bus ride ticket to heaven. And we're gonna be raptured before anything bad ever happens to us. There are political regimes, there are nations and empires building right now. There are groups of businessmen and elitists meeting in places like the Bohemian Grove during the summer. To, for debauchery and decadence and, and, and in the midst of that, they are planning evil, uh, plans for worldwide business, educational, social media, entertainment, political takeover. For ulterior motives. Some of them are, don't even have one glimpse of the devil or the enemy in mind, they're just got money, sex, drugs and rock and roll in mind. But Satan will use them for his bidding. So God is saying, it is time that the church wakes up and we see it for what it is. And we quit participating in it. And we quit being actively involved. God's got his hand on you, God is opening your eyes, he is telling you, I get ready, cause I'm coming back soon. Today is the day of salvation, today is the day of change. So may God bless you, may God keep you, may he make his face shine upon you, may God show you his mercy, his grace, may he give you a glimpse. Ask the Lord for visions, ask the Lord for dreams, ask the Lord for interpretation. Ask the Lord for the gift of healing, ask the Lord for the gift of tongues, ask the Lord for knowledge and, and supernatural wisdom. Ask the Lord to do miracles through you, ask God to use you to bring, bro- heal broken hearts. Be the man or the woman that God's called you and created you to be. And make, and, and we'll see you next time, God bless you, thank you for joining us.